Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Bia Seattle.
Here.
Director of Law, Ping Nettelo.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Elliot.
Here.
Councilwoman-at-large Kelly.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Koyu. Board one councilman Curriasis.
Here.
Board two councilman Martin.
Here.
Board three councilman Snitzke.
Here.
Board four councilman Delacqua.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties Johnson.
Here.
Building Commissioner Hoop.
Engineer Collins.
Here.
Community Service Director Tony T.
Thank you. I'd first like to make a motion to excuse Councilman John Kulu.
Second.
Roca.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion to waive the 24-hour delivery requirement for ordinance number 20-2020, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to accept and sign the First Amendment to the agreement between the county of Cuyahoga, Ohio, and the city of Seven Hills for the resurfacing of Sprague Road from Broadview Road to the Eastern Corporation Line and declaring an emergency. Also, same motion for ordinance 21-2020, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with the Seven Hills Firefighters Association for the purpose of memorializing wage negotiations with various fire department employees and declaring an emergency.
Second.
And to amend the agenda by entering ordinance numbers 20-2020 and 21-2020 onto the agenda as item numbers nine E1 and nine E2 respectively, if there is no division of the question.
Second.
Roca.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. We will now have the reading and disposal of the journal.
Madam President.
Councilman.
Having read the minutes of the regular council meeting of February 25, 2020, I find no errors or omissions, and I therefore move that council accept those minutes as submitted.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Minutes of the regular council meeting held on February 25, 2020 are accepted. Moving on to the consent agenda, if there's no division of the question, actually, I'm sorry, for the consent agenda, we have no submissions for March 10, 2020.
Second.
Moving on to resolutions of commendation, we'll begin with resolution number 6-2020.
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution 6-2020 by its entirety for its first and final reading.
Second.
Roca.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Resolution number six, 2020, introduced by Mayor Bia Seattle and councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua. A resolution of commendation to William H. Dodd, City of Seven Hills Hall of Fame, Resident of the Month, March 2020. Whereas Bill Dodd became a resident of Seven Hills in 1956, Bill Dodd participated in the city's Little League program while growing up and was involved with Hillside Junior High School's cross-country, wrestling, and track teams as a student. Bill Dodd continued to run cross-country and track while attending Normandy High School. Whereas Bill Dodd, in addition to his full-time postal carrier job, which he held for 30 years, coached track at Hillside and Normandy for 17 years, and currently volunteers with Hillside's track program. While coaching at Normandy High School, Bill Dodd had a track invitational named after him, which is held at Byers Field annually. He has coached cross-country at Normandy for 32 years and continues coaching today. Bill Dodd was voted Coach of the Year six times. And whereas Bill Dodd has run 18 Boston marathons, and has run several Columbus, Marine Corps, Cleveland, Revco, and Akron Topiath marathons, one of his most memorable marathons was in Athens, Greece, where he was the second American to cross the finish line and placed 15th overall. Bill Dodd has also run numerous 10Ks and has run many 5Ks in numerous cities. Whereas Bill Dodd is well-known in the community, and many of the kids he coached are still currently in touch with him, and he's happy he has been a small part in them becoming well-rounded and disciplined young individuals. Bill Dodd has achieved many accomplishments, and his leadership is extremely inspiring to all who have an interest in being involved in their community. Whereas the City of Seven Hills and the Hall of Fame Committee would like to recognize Bill Dodd for his outstanding achievements and endeavors by presenting him with the March 2020 Seven Hills Hall of Fame Resident of the Month honor. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, at the appreciation of the mayor, council, and all other elected and appointed officials hereby extended to Bill Dodd for his outstanding achievements and accomplishments, and the best wishes of the official family are here with extended to him for continued success. At the clerk of council being, she is hereby authorized and directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to Bill Dodd immediately upon its adoption. That this resolution is hereby determined to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city's Seven Hills, and for the further reason that same affects the day-to-day business of the municipality. Wherefore this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its adoption, otherwise at the earliest period allowed by law.
Any comments?
Madam President.
Councilman.
Bill, I'm so glad to see you here tonight, meeting you 15 years ago when I was a basketball coach at Normandy, and you were coaching track and cross-country, and also a fellow employee at the Postal Service with me. It's great to see you get this. A lot of people don't realize how hard it is to coach high school sports, putting up with all the politics and the parents and right down the line. I give you a lot of credit for sticking it out this long in coaching. And one thing I didn't know about you is that you ran Athens Marathon, which my family's from Greece, and that's quite an accomplishment. Also, running 18 Boston marathons, I can't believe you can still walk, but congratulations tonight. Good job.
Well, Director.
I went to high school with Bill Dodd. I've seen him almost every day on one street or another in Seven Hills ever since. I'm very proud of you, Bill. Proud to call you my friend. And I didn't know some of these things about you, but I'm not surprised.
Thanks.
I will say, Mr. Dodd, after reading your bio, I can say where I know where your love for running came. If you were a postal carrier for 30 years, I'm guessing you probably ran from some dogs at some point. But I want to congratulate you on this commendation. After 32 years of coaching, it's clear you have a passion for cross-country. And no matter what I say to you here today, I think the biggest compliment you've received is the fact that your students still like to remain in touch with you, and they look up to you. So there's a lot to be said for that. You lead not only as a coach, but as a person. So I congratulate you, and this is well-deserved. Thank you so much. Councilman.
Mr. Dodd, my father-in-law was a postal carrier for many decades, and I can tell you that it took a toll on him. I saw later in life what it did to his knees and his physical strength, and you have my full admiration because, obviously, you turned out a lot better than he wound up. And I think also looking at your accomplishments here, it's an example to everyone the importance of sports and competition, and what a community created around an individual, and the importance of a community that will focus on these kinds of things as an example for our young people to understand that competition and achievement in sports can have other beneficial aspects in all parts of our lives. So I commend you on that, as well as your willingness to work with young people to advance those ideals in them as well. Thank you, resident of Seven Hills, sir.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mayor.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Bill, thank you for over 30 years of coaching, but it's not just coaching, it's volunteering. Your fixture at not only Normandy but Hillside here in Seven Hills, important part of your coaching, has been your mentoring of young men and women. This was on display a few weeks ago when we did an Eagle Scout presentation, and you were recognized there as well. So your service to the greater community did not begin with and end with coaching, though your record speaks for itself. You've had teams that have been the regionals, you've had many boys that have went to states, and that does not happen by accident. And last but not least, among the other things we have in common, and I was surprised when I was doing a little homework, is we have the distinction of both of us have been coached by Bob Wright. So what that means is we're both long in tooth. So without further ado, on behalf of the city, thank you for all your contributions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. With no further comments, do I have a further motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move that we adopt resolution 6-2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Resolution 6-2020 has been adopted.
Thank you. I want to thank council, and Rick, we also played baseball together. I don't know if you remember back in Seven Hills Little League.
I kind of forgot. It's so long ago.
Yeah, it was so long ago, but...
Yeah, that's right. I think the Indians, was it the Indians?
Was it the Indians. Mr. Pasek was the coach. I want to thank council, I want to like, you know, thank Tony Terry and the Hall of Fame Committee. It's been a pleasure, and I think a lot of what happened in our youth with the teachers and Bob Wrights, I think they're part of us, and I think it's always been a passion of mine to always serve the community. My dad was a United States Marine, and he worked as a volunteer fireman from Seven Hills, and he always said, "Get back to the community." And this is what I try to do, and I'm proud and honored to have served as a coach for all these young men and women all my life. I like working with young people, and I like running, and that's, I mean, I'm living the dream. It's a great reality to work with these young men and women. And I'm quite honored, I actually moved out of Seven Hills when I was 27, but I came back and bought my dad's house, you know, after he passed on, and I really truly enjoy being part of this community and the city. It's an excellent location, and we've got a good city and a good city government, and I'm which I'm proud, and I'm proud of being a citizen and a plan to live out my life here. Thank you very much for this work.
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution 7-2020 by its entirety for its first and final reading. Second motion.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Resolution number seven, 2020, introduced by Mayor Bia Seattle and councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua. A resolution of commendation to firefighter Dale Stefanini, City of Seven Hills, Ohio. Whereas Dale Stefanini has completed 40 valuable years of service to the City of Seven Hills as a firefighter for the City of Seven Hills. And whereas council and all elected and appointed officials hereby specifically wish to thank, honor, and recognize Dale Stefanini for his outstanding service and dedication to our community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, at the appreciation of the mayor, council, and all other elected and appointed officials, is hereby extended to Dale Stefanini for his sincere dedication and active service to the community and the residents of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, as a Seven Hills firefighter for 40 years, and the best wishes of the official family are here with extended to him for continued success. At the clerk of council being, she is hereby authorized and directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to Dale Stefanini immediately upon its adoption. That this resolution is hereby determined to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the city of Seven Hills, and for the reason that same affects the day-to-day business of the municipality. Wherefore this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its adoption, otherwise at the earliest period allowed by law.
Any comments?
Yeah, Madam President.
Councilman.
Dale, 40 years of service is amazing. I can only imagine how many lives you've touched, how many people you've saved. I know as firefighters and police, we, you know, don't get the credit we deserve sometimes, but I can only imagine over a 40-year career how many lives you've touched. I know as a city, we thank you for your dedication and your service. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stefanini, I would like to thank you for your dedication and service to the city. Forty years is a long time. When you're doing anything for 40 years, I don't believe it's just a job. It's, it has to be a calling and a passion and all of that rolled up all into one. So I thank you for your, for your service to the city, and I'd like to congratulate you on the commendation. It is well-deserved. I wish you, I wish you nothing but the best, and I hope you enjoy your retirement and be safe. Thank you, sir. Councilman.
Hi, Dale. Thanks for all of your efforts on behalf of the city. I would echo everything that was just said. I would add one thing. After 40 years, here's an opportunity to get that classic car on the road, and you will, you will inspire me to do the same with my car. Let's do it this year.
Look who's talking. Yeah.
Any further comments? Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Dale, thanks for your 40 years of service to the city. Being a first responder is something very special, like was said by others, you touched a lot of lives over those 40 years. Thank you to your family that's here tonight as well. Being a first responder, you never know when you're going to run out. We just, we had several firefighters here today to help celebrate, and they got a call, and they went running. And I just sat here tonight and thought to myself, geez, how many times over 40 years were you in the middle of something and you got a call and you went running? So, thank you. And your spirit to serve isn't ending, because I understand that you signed up to be a volunteer on our home days committee, if that's...
Correct.
Maybe you don't know that yet. Maybe we just volunteered. Maybe you should have told your wife first. Anyhow, thank you for the 40 years, and anything that comes down the road ahead of us is just a bonus. Thank you.
Tony.
Dale, I want to thank you not just for your 40 years of service, but your undedicate, or your, your complete dedication to the residents of our city as a volunteer. The things that you've done in those 40 years beyond your work experience do not get mentioned enough, so I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the Community Services Department and where... Department and where we are today and let you know that the efforts that you've put forth in those forty years being involved with the city have not gone unnoticed and will not go unnoticed. And I'm honored to have the opportunity to work this Home Days and many more going forward with you. So thank you very much for your spirit of volunteerism, and it's passed on in your wonderful family. So you've set a great example, and they have followed suit, and nothing is more complimentary than that.
Any more comments? Oh, Law Director.
I'd just like to congratulate you. Forty years of service is an amazing thing, and I think the city's going to miss you. They're going to wonder where you went after being there forty years. I'd love to hear all the changes that you've seen since the beginning, when you guys raced up to the fire station and raced to wherever the call was from. But good luck to you in whatever you choose to do.
Dale, I have to thank you, too. It just dawned on me. You were probably one of the old-time volunteers, because I think we went full-time, went in mid-eighties, something like that. So, and I, as somebody that's been in the city since 1970, I have very fond memories of all you guys racing downhill side road with your very strange sirens and your very strange SUVs and different kind of lights on your cars that were definitely different but effective. So thank you for doing that, and good luck to you in the future.
Okay. Okay, no comments. Do I have a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we adopt Resolution 7-2020.
Second the motion.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Resolution 7-2020 has been adopted.
It was a long forty years, but I enjoyed every bit of it. Asked my family, the meals we missed, but it was worth it. Thanks, guys. I appreciate everything.
Shall we all go? No, I'll let the guys go.
What a hotly looking crew.
Okay, well, now we have the reports of committees. Planning, zoning, and economic development.
Previous meeting minutes are on file with the clerk.
Thank you. Public Works, the last meeting was February 11th, 2020. The minutes are pending. The next meeting will be April 14th. Community Services?
Madam President.
Councilman.
Community Services met this evening. Minutes are pending with the clerk, and next meeting is April 14th.
Police and Fire?
Thank you, Madam President. The minutes from today are pending. The next meeting will be held on April 14th.
Thank you. Parks and Rec?
Thank you, Madam President. The next meeting is March 24th.
Thank you. Rules, ordinances, and ethics?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Councilman Elliot for conducting the last Rules Committee meeting in my absence and for submitting the rules to the council, the minutes to the council clerk.
Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, our last meeting was February 25th. The minutes are on file with our council clerk, and our next meeting is March 24th. Mayor, do we have any appointments or confirmations?
None this evening.
Thank you. Council Clerk, any communications, petitions, or claims?
There are none.
Thank you. Council is now open to the audience on legislation only. No comments? Okay. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, we'll now have the second reading of Ordinance Number 15-2020.
Ordinance Number 15, 2020, introduced by Councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua, an ordinance to amend the appropriations of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the year ending December 31st, 2020.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance Number 16-2020.
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read amended Ordinance 16-2020 by title only for its final reading under emergency.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 16, 2020, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a forty-five-month guaranteed price agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with ADP LLC of Roseland, New Jersey, for the procurement of payroll, tax filing, benefits administration, and other data processing services, and authorizing an amount not to exceed seventy thousand nine hundred twenty dollars for said service and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we pass amended Ordinance Number 16-2020.
Second.
Point of order.
Do we have to make a motion to read it by it, consider it as an emergency? Your separate call for that.
Madam President, I move that we approve the emergency clause found in the last section of Ordinance 16-2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
One more time.
Madam President, I move that we pass Ordinance Number 16-2020 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance 16-2020 has passed.
We'll now have the first reading of Ordinance Number 17-2020.
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move to suspend the rules under the Charter and read Ordinance Number 17-2020 by title only for its first and final reading.
Second. Roll call.
Delacqua.
Aye, yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 17, 2020, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with ADP LLC of Roseland, New Jersey, for professional services for the 1095, 1094 mandated reporting as a result of the Affordable Care Act, authorizing an amount not to exceed forty-eight hundred dollars for said service and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we approve the emergency clause found in the last section of Ordinance Number 17-2020.
Second. Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we pass Ordinance Number 17-2020 as an emergency measure.
Second. Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance 17-2020 has passed. We'll now have the first reading of Ordinance Number 18-2020.
Ordinance Number 18, 2020, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Jackson Deacon and Associates of Westlake, Ohio, and appropriating a sum not to exceed ninety-four thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars for the furnishing of comprehensive municipal liability insurance coverage for the policy period covering April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021.
Thank you. We'll now have the first reading of Ordinance Number 19-2020.
Ordinance Number 19, 2020, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua, an ordinance to amend Section 1143.08, parking of recreational vehicles as contained in Chapter 1143, exterior maintenance of Title III local building provisions of Part 11 Building Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Thank you. We'll now have the first reading of Resolution Number 8-20... Oh, pardon me. Okay. We'll now have the first reading of Ordinance Number 20-2020.
We jump all the way to 20-2020. Okay. Yeah, I'm looking for it. Here it is. Hold on. Madam President.
Councilman.
Oh, I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter, read Ordinance 20-2020 by title only for its first and final reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 20, 2020, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to accept and sign the First Amendment to the agreement between County of Cuyahoga, Ohio, and City of Seven Hills for the resurfacing of Sprague Road from Broadview Road to the Eastern Corporation Line and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we approve the emergency clause found in the last section of Ordinance 20-2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Madam...
Councilman.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I just want a question for the law director before we move forward. There's a minor typo in the title. Is that, it's, Sprague is spelled wrong in the title, but it's spelled correctly in the body. Do we need to fix this now, or we... Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor.
Further motion?
Further motion?
I move that we pass Ordinance 20-2020 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-2020 has passed. We'll now have the first reading of Ordinance Number 21-2020.
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read Ordinance 21-2020 by title only for its first and final reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21, 2020, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with the Seven Hills Firefighters Association for the purpose of memorializing wage negotiations with various fire department employees and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we approve the emergency clause found in the last section of Ordinance 21-2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we pass Ordinance 21-2020 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-2020 has passed. We'll now have the first reading of Resolution Number 8-2020.
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read Resolution Number 8-2020 by title for its final reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Resolution Number 8, 2020, introduced by Mayor Biaseata and Councilpersons Kelly, Elliot, Koyu, Curriasis, Martin, Snitzke, and Delacqua, a resolution memorializing the James J. Zupka CPA Incorporated engagement letter in reference to the Auditor of State Award of the City's Audit Contract for 2019 through 2023, authorizing and directing the mayor and the finance director or his or her designee to sign the letter of engagement and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I move that we adopt Resolution 8-2020.
Second.
Point of order. I have to read the second one.
Not for a resolution. Not for a resolution.
Okay, my bad.
Second.
Roll call.
Delacqua. Delacola.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Resolution eight dash twenty-two has been adopted. Council is now open to the audience. Please approach the podium. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Hello. Pat Pritchard, I live at five-nine-one Twilight Drive. Right. I'm bringing to your attention, we recently found out that the assessment for the Hemlock Creek Sewer Project, we're going to be getting, I guess, letters in a few weeks with our cost for putting in the sewers. Evidently, that includes street paving, is that correct? That the residents are being charged for the paving of the street as part of the sewer project?
That is, I, I'm assuming that's correct. Mr. Collins, would you like to address that?
Sure, Madam President. Yes, the pavement portion of the project that involved the new public sanitary sewers, a portion of that pavement is indeed included with the assessment cost.
Okay. You know, I don't know what, how that was approved, or what we can do to change it, but like, I live on Twilight Drive and it hasn't been paved for twenty-five years. It was full of potholes, it's deteriorated terribly for years and years, and, you know, now to finally get it paved with the sewer project, I don't believe that the residents should have to bear the burden of that cost along with the assessment for the sewer, and then we're going to have to tie into the sewer and pay thousands for that. Seven Hills pays for other streets to be paved, you know, in that twenty-five-year period, I don't know how many different streets have been paved, but our street has not been, and, you know, it doesn't seem fair at all. I don't know if it was a previous administration that approved it, or whatever, what can be done to change that so that the residents can get a break, like, off of their assessment before the letters come out? If we can get the cost lower to the residents and take off the part with the paving and the city picks that up? I mean, after, after all, Meyer's going to be going in, there's a new nursing home going in, there will be tax money coming to the city, but for some of us that aren't able to pay off that approximate twelve thousand dollars right up front, we're going to have, we can't pay it, we're going to have to put it on our tax bill for twenty years, well, you know, as the city gets more money, that doesn't help any of us. So if, I don't know what can be done, or if you, we can have a meeting with some of you, do we need a petition? You know, I don't know how that can be looked at to be changed, but if, if the residents can get a break and get something off for their assessment cost that doesn't include the paving of the street. Because we've, we've lived with that street for a long time, and I know, like, when Fabrizi did the project, there were trucks constantly, even after our sewers were in, they still, for months after, used our street, like, with all their vehicles, there was dust everywhere, the street was ground down even further damaged. So, I'm not sure if you need a petition from residents, or if you guys can hold a meeting and kind of look into that, see what you can do to possibly lower the cost, take off the paving portion for the residents. It would be greatly appreciated, because we're going to have a lot of expense with all the other work. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir, please.
My name is Rob Snyder, resident three-four-five Twilight Drive. Pat, I think you did a nice job expressing our concerns on Twilight Drive. Resident for thirty years, no need to rehash all the particulars, but the road has been used as a construction zone and it's been left unserved. It would make sense for Twilight Drive to have the cost of the surfacing picked up, the remainder of the cost picked up by Seven Hills. I know you did pay a portion of the allocation, you paid for the intersections, and you paid, as you said, Mr. Engineer, that you have paid for some of it, but the road itself and the relief that we would receive from the remainder of it makes a lot of sense. It's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Casperzak, sixty-seven thirty-three Donner Ray Drive. Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The reason I'm standing here today is, I'm looking for the city as part of the Hemlock rerouting project, put a street lamp at the corner of Donner Ray and Forest Outlook. On Saturday, February twenty-ninth, I stopped at the Hemlock meeting, unaware of what it was for, I just saw it on the marquee, and at that time, I had the opportunity to talk to my councilman, Councilman Snitzke, and I explained my concern. Councilman Snitzke took my concern, and he sent an email to myself and Mr. Johnson, and the email reads, "At the meeting Saturday, Paul Casperzak suggested that we consider a street light at this corner. With the number of houses in the area being vacated for the Hemlock rerouting project, the intersection is becoming darker." Thanks, thank you, Councilman. He addressed it to Mr. Johnson, who replied back, "We'll take a look at it. Can I get a better idea of how the removal of the homes is causing the intersection to become darker? Trying to get a visual here." Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I felt it would be better if I just came and addressed everybody at once. How you're getting darker here is, you're removing eight, ten, twelve homes. On Donner Ray and on Karen Drive, there are no streetlights. If you left today, went downhillside, turned onto Laura Lee and onto Ala, every corner where there's a street, there is a streetlight. Even where Laura Lee dead-ends into Ala, there is a streetlight. When you turn and go on down Laura Lee, onto Donner Ray, there is no streetlight. Now, at the corner of Laura Lee and Forest Outlook, there are two streetlights. I'd like to approach council bench with some pictures that I've taken of that, is that okay?
Yes.
Those are pictures that I took this past Saturday, looking east and looking west. As you can see, those streetlights are quite weathered, but those lights still work. Now, gratefully, a couple of the members, a couple of my neighbors still put their lights on at night. As a matter of fact, one of the neighbors, whose home I know is going to be removed, has spotlights on. Now, I believe, and I could be wrong, and I'm not trying to put these people on the spot, but police and fire, if they had streetlights out, make their job much easier. That is what I'm here to address. I'm also here to address a different issue. The other issue I'm here to address is, goes back to when I was at a meeting last year. At one of your meetings, I heard Councilman Norman Martin recommend the fact that, does the city have a disaster recovery plan? I talked to Mr. Martin, and he explained to me that you guys are in the process of looking at this. A week ago Sunday, there's a TV show called CBS Sunday Morning. Six months ago on that Sunday, the Bahamas was wiped out by a hurricane. Now, we're not going to get hurricanes around here, but I'm sure all of us who have a certain age remembered that when there was a tornado warning, we didn't worry about them at night. But times have changed. I'm a believer of global warming. But one of the things they took away from this hurricane in the Bahamas now, is they're going solar. They had one building that had solar, and that was the school. What I see here is three buildings that are very important to the city. This building, the police station, excuse me, the fire station, and the service, the rec center. My question is, is the, is the city considering going solar or green with any of these buildings? In this report, they said, the big thing about now is, the cost is, the batteries are becoming much more efficient and effective and cheaper. The last thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to say thank you to Engineer Collins. As many of you know, what has happened in my backyard, Engineer Collins set up a meeting with Cuyahoga Soil and Water and West Creek. Currently, my backyard is, for lack of better words, in limbo, but I do appreciate Councilman, Engineer Collins going to that, set that meeting up, and hopefully, something will come of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments?
Renee George, five-one-eight Twilight Drive. I am here in support and in agreeance with most of the residents on Twilight about the road repair, the cost, and the fact that we should not assume the pavement cost in our assessment cost. Secondly, Twilight has been a secondary road on the city list, and frankly, most of us are tired of it being a secondary road. The road was used for a pathway and a main pathway for all the construction vehicles. They were told only to drive on Twilight, in and out for the entire project of those seven streets. I think that was unfair. We had extreme amount of dust, dirt, tire damage, and now, the way that it was repaired is inadequate and not up to par to the rest of the streets. There's no curb lines, there's, it wasn't paved far enough over to the mailboxes, there's ruts from the mail traffic, the mail truck, the delivery up and down. In some cases, there's a foot deep of mud. Every, all that new grass is destroyed, they're going to have to come back and, and reseed it. Mr. Collins is aware of this, but I think the fact that he's, he's listened very well to us along the way, except things aren't progressing as fast as we want it to be, and we also don't think that we should, again, have that cost of the payment, pavement of all those other streets that Twilight has to pay for when we don't have an adequate street in the end. So, as Pat said, if there's something that you guys can do to reduce the cost of even Twilight residents, that would be greatly appreciated, and I don't think that we should have to live with the conditions of the way that that road was repaired, since all the other roads are concrete, they have curbs, they have white lines painted on them, they're beautiful, they go, no, no mail road traffic. I think Twilight residents are tired of being the last to be taken care of. Please address these issues as soon as you can, before that final number comes out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. I'm hoping that council here could address some of your issues during our miscellaneous Any further comments from our residents? Okay, we're going to move on to our reports and communications from the mayor slash service director, safety director.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report this evening, I just want to thank all the residents for coming, we got some first-time residents here today, and I want you to know your voices have been heard. I'll work with council, we'll revisit some of these things, specific to repairs on Twilight, I believe they're forthcoming. Engineer Collins will have an opportunity to speak later this evening, and I'm sure he'll bring us all up to speed on the forthcoming repairs to Twilight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from the directors of departments and other officials. Director of Law.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Director of Community Services, do you have any comments?
I do, thank you, Madam President. I would like to address the council with the gentleman in the front row, his name is Nick, he's with Alexis Property Management. I did not ask for him to be here today, he happened to be here, so I wanted to take this moment to let everybody know that his company, Alexis Property Management, was involved with a community cleanup in October. The community cleanup project estimated in volunteers from Lowe's, with five employees that worked there, waste management with a forty-yard dumpster that they dropped, Jim's Tree Service, Alexis Property Management, myself, Danny, our building inspector, was there volunteering, and a resident, Eddie Bicker, was there volunteering. Did, we estimated over seven thousand dollars worth of work for this resident to get them back into accordance with some building codes. So I wanted to thank him for stepping up. His company was, donated twenty-seven hundred dollars worth of work for our residents, so thank you very much.
And in light of current social media postings, I think it's important to reiterate, the Department of Community Services often acts in a way that is private and with dignity to our residents who are in need. I think it's very important that it maintains that way, so that the residents who are in need won't look and say, "Well, I don't want to go see Tony," or Community Services, because my name and my story may be splashed all over Facebook, and there may be, we need our residents to understand that my office is a safe haven, it is a private place, where we discuss matters that will benefit them and help, and, quite frankly, help save lives and certainly make a difference. So, I wanted that to be known, that I will continue to run that department with dignity, and I will not be answering any proposed questions. Certainly, nobody here tonight has asked, but I just wanted it to be known that I will not be answering proposed questions in regards to these residents and their establishments that I am helping with. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving on to the Director of Public Service and Properties.
No report, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Moving on with our city engineer, Dan Collins.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to thank Paul over on Bonroyd for the kind words you said this evening, for me helping you out, and hopefully, continuing to help you out with these outside agencies with your erosion issues, and I wanted to thank the three residents on Twilight coming today and bringing this up at a, at a public meeting, your concerns on the, on the pavement costs for Twilight, and also the berming issues. It's, we've been watching that over the winter, we've been quite well aware of that. The contractor is well aware of the berming issues, you know, due to the soft berms towards the end of the season of construction, when the mailmen and typically the garbage people drive, and, you know, even some residents too are visitors, you know, your berm shouldn't be that soft, obviously, and they are going to be, they are going to be repaired and restored in the spring. And obviously, you know, all the grass that didn't take throughout the entire project area, you know, isn't going to grow over the winter, so it's not the grass growing season just yet, but stay tuned, you know, we're right around the corner, spring's coming, the contractor's going to be out there to restore the grass, you know, the areas it didn't take in the fall. But, you know, regarding the, the most important probably topic why you residents are here today is about the pavement, should that be part of an assessment cost on the project? And it's a very, very good question, and I don't have an answer for you there, ultimately, it's not up to me on making that final decision. It's up to administration and our outside council and our board department, strictly following state law on, on the assessment proceedings, procedures and proceedings. So we will have that information all available, you know, to, to council, and eventually to the residents when it's finalized, and it will definitely, I think, take that into consideration as far as the pavement costs go, and see what we can do to perhaps reduce that, but, you know, I don't think there's any promises that could be made here tonight. Again, it's not solely my, my decision, so that's all I have, Madam President, unless there's any other questions from you and our council.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collins. Okay, we'll start with miscellaneous comments from our council.
Madam President.
Councilman.
Yeah, I want to, just want to thank Mayor Biaseada and Councilman Elliott, and any other council members that were instrumental in bringing Conica Minolta to the city last Monday, March second. They had their ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting over on Lombardo in their new, in the building, and Mayor Biaseada, Councilman Elliott, me, and I know Madam President Kelly stopped later in the day to greet them to the city, and they're very first-class, first-class business, and I'm looking forward to working with them in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. Two items, first one, first one's for Tony Terry. A, carry on, and B, you know, a few of those things were read to me, because I tend not to, I don't participate in social media, I'm too old, I think, or something, but I do get to hear of the items, and again, carry on and do the good work you do, and it's not quite appreciated, the, the privacy issues that are, that are necessary, and the dignity, not only for the way you conduct yourself, but the dignity of the individuals being served has to be held up paramount to everything else. Folks just may not appreciate that or understand that. Everybody wants to do good, but we also have to deal with the issues that present themselves, and you do a fine job in doing that, and I appreciate it and hope to continue to see you carry on doing that. The second item is, the gentleman had discussed a little bit of solar issues and et cetera, or more importantly, preparation, and I know this council's committed to getting started and getting, and getting a, a plan in place and a process in place, and maybe one of the outcomes could be something related to independent energy needs for our critical buildings, and the, the good news is, we, we did address this as the service department and through the police chief, of the ability to have power for this particular building through a generator, and that, and that has been up and running, and we, so we've got ourselves covered there, and I believe there's, I don't know where the other generators are, if there is, but I do know here.
We've got three of them, I think.
Three, yeah, the fire department's got a small one, right?
Yeah.
But regardless, these are all outcomes that'll get generated, and then, of course, once you get an outcome that can be agreed upon by, hopefully by consensus, you, you have to fund that, and so hopefully, it'll be considered and looked at for the positives that aspects that can be. I wish we were in Tennessee with a little more sunshine, but, but it just may require more square footage to get the same output, but something to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Snitzke.
Okay, Mr. Casperzak, I just wanted to let you know that the service department is looking at that street light. I don't know what the outcome will be, but you're right, that corner is a little bit on the dark side, so they're looking at it, and it's a whole process, so we'll let the service department do their thing and see where we end up with it. it's a whole process, so we'll let the service department do their thing and see where we end up with it, okay? Okay, all right. My friends that live over on Twilight, can you guys hang around for a few minutes after the meeting? Want to talk a little bit about what's what over there, and we'll just go from there, all right?
Councilman Delacuilla.
Thank you. To touch briefly on the funding for the project, I was around when this was debated quite extensively. I'm sorry, did someone say that?
Fine, they quiet it.
Okay.
It's police radio.
All right, we, I don't know if you remember this, but the city was successful in obtaining two very large grants for this project, totaling three and a half million dollars. All of that grant money goes to the residents to defray the cost of the project, including pavement, which is one of the reasons why the pavement is folded into the project. We, I forget the exact numbers, but we received one point two, one point three without any controversy, but the larger of the two grants, we, from the Ohio Department of Public Works, was rejected. What the department does is they score projects on a sliding scale, they assign certain numbers for certain criteria, and we missed the funding, funding cutoff point by five points. Well, at that time, we looked at how they scored the project, and it was apparent that they were not giving sufficient weight to the potential consequence to the entire watershed for failing septic systems. They were only looking within the city of Seven Hills itself. So the city of Seven Hills filed an appeal. As a result of that appeal, we received the additional five points, which put us into the funding category. As a result of that, we received, actually, the residents are receiving, three and a half million dollars, most of which they wouldn't have received had we not appealed it. That all goes to the residents, the city doesn't keep any of that, and that's the basis partly for why the pavement is being included in the project, because we were able to knock off roughly ten, eleven thousand dollars off each resident's bill. I agree about the social media. I don't read the stuff, I find when people insist on sending to me the postings, I find most of it objectionable, over the top, creatively false. When we hear city officials having to come to a meeting and respond to frankly baloney that people are putting online, it frankly ticks me off. I know what was done at this particular project, and I know some other things as well. And you went, Tony, beyond and above what anybody would have done under similar circumstances. It simply came to the point, and I'm, I'm not going to go into detail, it simply came to the point that the house could not be habited any longer. And I want to thank you for being on top of it, and I want to thank some of the other city officials I see sitting here for stepping up, taking care of our residents, doing it in a professional way, not finding it necessary to spit back at the people who are spitting at you. I find it objectionable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Elliot.
Madam President.
Councilman.
I want to thank the administration, I want to thank council for getting the collective bargaining agreement through this evening, it's a, it's a great step, I want to also thank you for helping myself and the, the new chief out with some of the equipment that the fire department desperately needs. Can't wait, I know it's a long process, it'll take a year for some of the stuff to get here, but we have some developments, they're going to probably take a year to build, so, it'll be perfect timing when they come out. So I want to thank all you guys for your, your support, thank you very much.
I have no further comments. Wait, go ahead, any further comments? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At eight sixteen.
Sorry, second.
Roll call, please. Delacuilla.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriazas.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.